This is the June thirteenth, regular meeting of the planning board. And we're going to first call for the approval of the agenda. Everybody had a chance to look at that? Okay.
I need to approve the agenda as submitted.
Motion in a second. All those in favor of the agenda say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No? Alright, agenda is approved. Next, we're going to review the approval of the minutes from the last meeting. Thank you. They're very, wherever you are. Emmy, I think they're great detail. Any comments, changes, motions?
I move that we approve the minutes.
Say Stu seconded that. Alright, all in favor of approval of the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nope. Okay, very good. Alright. I don't believe, do we have any old business from the planning staff? No? Okay. We're going to move on to new business. There's five items. I'm going to step down for two of them, the second and the third items, and Tamara will take over for those. But I will start as the first item. I have no conflict in that. So Matt, if you would proceed, please.
This first item is for a CZB AAA storage. This is a 2.25 acre tract of Sugarloaf Road. The proposed use is for mini warehouses or self-storage, just to be an expansion of an existing use.
An expansion of existing use to construct five additional self-storage buildings. The future designation is Business Center. This parcel was created out of a larger parcel that you may recognize that was part of the Apple Ridge affordable housing developments. This parcel was created. There are some existing structures on it. And it is adjacent right here to the existing AAA storage. That was a exempt subdivision that was approved earlier this year. Here's some site photos. Upper left, it just kind of gives you an idea of looking off the Sugarloaf Road, looking into the site. The upper right photo is looking east on Sugarloaf Road. The bottom right is looking west on Sugarloaf Road. You can see some of those existing structures there. And the picture on the bottom left is looking from the existing, looking at the existing AAA storage and looking towards where they would be expanding. This is the site plan here. It depicts five mini warehouse buildings as mentioned. Totals, the expansion would be forty-nine thousand six hundred ninety-two square feet. It shows the associated vehicular and pedestrian circulation, common space, buffers and landscaping, and a retaining wall that is proposed along the property boundary to the west, if correct. And no, that may not be correct. Do you have anything? No retaining wall. Sorry, take that back. This site plan was reviewed by the DRC. It did not trigger a TIA review. Community development comments were all either resolved or addressed by the developer's condition, which I'll get into. Floodplain Administrator, NCDOT Staff, Fire Marshal and City Engineer had comments as well that were all resolved or will be at the final site plan. And the Stormwater Administrator, Public Works Director and Water Sewer Department did not have any comments or concerns. The one condition which is listed on the, on the site plan that's proposed by the developer, it relates to the right-of-way for Apple Ridge. If that right-of-way was there, they would be permitted to have a ten-foot setback. Because that, that right-of-way is not yet there. It has been approved and proposed but not built. They would be required a thirty-foot setback. But since that is an approved right-of-way that we believe will be constructed, they have proposed a ten-foot setback from that eastern property boundary. And so that is a condition. We just wanted to clarify that. They also agreed to the tree boards to propose conditions as well. We got a neighborhood compatibility meeting on May fourth, very lightly attended, just some questions about the proposed project. The property is currently zoned R-15 and is adjacent to the Apple Ridge, as I mentioned, which was recently rezoned to PRD. Parcels to the west primarily contain commercial uses, commercial zoning classifications, even if there's vacant land there. There's the City of Hendersonville Fire Station number two in proximity, the existing AAA mini storage, Cascade Mountain Resort and vacant land. Parcels to the north are also, we find some commercial zoning there, mixed with residential zoning. And of note are the Claystone Plan Manufactured Housing Development and the Sugarloaf and Sugar Hill Apartments. To the east, properties are zoned R-15 and County R-1. And you see those adjacent to the Apple Ridge development. Looking at the future land use, the designation of the subject property is Business Center. You have high-intensity neighborhood to the north across Sugarloaf Road. And you do have some medium-intensity neighborhood between Apple Ridge and I-26. But that, that corridor along Sugarloaf Road is kind of split between Business Center on the I-26 side and Neighborhood on the north side. So when we look at a rezoning, all rezoners, we consider six criteria. The first criteria is to consider the comprehensive plan consistency. This project is consistent with the goal of the Business Center designation, future land use designation. Business Center does, does recommend that neighborhood supportive retail and services such as proposed mini warehouses should be located along major thoroughfares. Sugarloaf Road is designated as a minor thoroughfare. The high-intensity neighborhood located directly across the street recommends similar uses located along thoroughfares does not make a distinction between major and minor. All that said, the zoning code for PCD would allow this type of use on a minor thoroughfare. So that was the only inconsistency. Site is designated as a priority growth area and is identified as a development opportunity in the, in the land use and development chapter. Compatible infill is supported by the Population and Housing Chapter along with support for redevelopment or reuse of single-family homes that directly front on arterials into office or high-density residential uses in coordination with the future land use map and encouraging mixed land use patterns that place residents within walking distance of services. Taking a look at the Natural and Environmental Resources Chapter, there is a stream at the rear of this property, so the, there are a couple of strategies relevant to that. Protect land adjacent to streams in order to protect water quality, reduce erosion and protect wildlife habitat and encourage restoration of natural habitat and drainage patterns in developed areas. There were no goals or strategies from the Cultural and Historic Resources Chapter nor the Community Facilities Chapter relevant to this petition. Water Resources, we bring this one up every time, recommends the utilization of low-impact development practices. And the Transportation and Circulation Chapter also encourages mixed-use pedestrian-friendly development. So that's our first criteria. The second is compatibility. This in this case, the proposed mini warehouse use is located in an area with range of uses and could, could serve nearby single-family and multifamily houses, and it would also be an extension of an existing use. Third criteria is changed conditions. In this case, the subject property was subdivided as mentioned. And the existing single-family homes on the property would be removed or proposed to be removed. Fourth criteria is public interest. There appears to be high demand for additional self-storage in this area. And then there's also the consideration of the loss of the houses, the housing stock. The fifth criteria is to consider public facilities. This property would be served by city water and sewers, police, fire and public works. Sugarloaf Road is an NCDOT thoroughfare. And the sixth criteria, effect on natural environment. The subject property features nineteen trees, mostly pines, that would be removed. They are going to try and save maybe a few poplars at the rear of the property if they can. And a portion of the stream is supposed to be piped and the developer can provide more detail on that. So taking all this into consideration, staff proposes the following draft comprehensive plan consistency statement, which is the subject property is located in an area designated as development opportunity and priority growth area according to the city's twenty thirty comprehensive plan. And some draft language for a reasonableness statement. The development of mini warehouses will be an extension of existing use. The mini warehouses will be in close proximity to recently approved affordable multifamily housing. And the petition provides access from a minor thoroughfare as required in the PCD zoning. Also have a rationale for denial, which would be Business Center does not recommend mini warehouses their self-storage along minor thoroughfares. With that, I'll open it up for any questions.
Questions from Matt?
Yes, sir. Got one real quick one, Matt. Under the reasons for approval, is there any, any reason why affordable housing was put in as opposed to just housing?
Because that, that project specifically had the condition that a percentage of affordable housing would be required. So just a description. And also, there's, you know, there are single-family as part of that development as well. I focused on the multifamily for the likelihood of potentially needing more space for storage apartments versus single-family homes.
Okay. Let me rephrase. Is it relevant that it's affordable as opposed to workforce or anything else? I just wondered why the word affordable was in there.
Just a description.
Thank you.
Sure.
Alright, thank you, Matt. At this time, does the developer or representatives care to speak? And we do ask for the developer side to keep your comments to ten minutes unless if possible.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the planning board. I'm Will Bowie with WGLA Engineering. I have an opportunity to present the project for you. AAA storage, I have a very short presentation. I'll keep it short and try to answer any questions that you all may have. As Matt described, the existing facility, the existing AAA storage was constructed about ten years ago on Sugarloaf Road has been in existence. I'm sure you're all familiar with the property and have seen it many times. This is a business is operated and owned by a local family, born family who are, are here today. They own and operate multiple storage locations throughout Henderson County as well as Bunkham County. They've got facilities in the city of Asheville and Bunkham County as well. And as far as the need goes, I think that they would tell you if they were up here that they have no available units today. So there is a distinct need for these additional units as we have seen from the additional housing stock that's being proposed. We'll share a couple of photographs with you, not going to dwell on this. This was the same presentation that we provided for the tree board just to give them an idea of the existing facility and the quality of the landscaping that the owners take upon themselves to provide. They will likely do in excess of what is proposed and what is required. The facility that they've just constructed in Etowah, they are planting additional, they've taken delivery of additional plantings out there that they'll be providing as an example for you. Again, if you have driven by and seen this, you've seen quite the, quite the buffer that they provide. And they were proposed to extend this very similar buffer throughout. This is just an aerial view. You saw a very similar aerial view on Matt's presentation. This project is really what we would call a sister project to the Apple Ridge property. The original property owner that sold that property, sold property for the Apple Ridge property as well as this property. It was always planned to, to subdivide out a small portion that would be for an expansion, a potential expansion of AAA storage. And so these projects working together have been able to bring the Apple Ridge project to you, and now this AAA storage project. And this is just an overlay. This shows the aerial of the vicinity. This shows the existing or the proposed, excuse me, Apple Ridge development you all saw a couple of months ago. This shows the proposed right-of-way that Matt described that will provide access to Apple Ridge. And then, of course, you can see the existing storage facility with the lighter gray buildings, the darker buildings, darker gray buildings are the proposed expansion for the development. This is a blow-up of the site plan. You can see on this plan, bit more detail about the proposed plantings that would be included around the perimeter of the development to again provide that buffer that is proposed that would match the existing buffer. Couple of points that I will share with you. We we are proposing to pipe a small portion of the stream here. There was a piping proposed of the Apple Ridge crossing of that stream. This would be a simple extension of that pipe. There's an existing storm drainage pipe that's located right here. And rather than having a pipe, stream, short section of stream, a pipe, it's going to be more consistent to pipe those sections together and not have sections of the stream that would be open in that area. This also allows for the grading. Ultimately, we believe this will reduce potential for erosion and damage in that area. Another point that I wanted to share with you because I know it's an issue that's near and dear to the planning board as hard as lighting. Our plan did show where lighting would be proposed throughout the development. It's only on the buildings. They only do downlighting, full cutoffs. It is very similar to what is required for the city of Asheville as they have been through their process. They carry that forward on all of their projects going forward. And this again is just a, a color aerial, a blow-up of the, of the proposed expansion. About forty-nine thousand square feet is Matt described in, in his, in his presentation. And this would be constructed over the course of, of multiple phases. And I'll stop at this point and try to answer any questions that you all might have.
Questions?
Alright, well, that's short and sweet. Thank you, Will.
Thank you.
Alright. At this time, does anybody here in the room wish to speak on this project? Okay. Do we have any callers on the Zoom? We do have one.
Got one, yeah.
Alright, thank you. We would ask the folks who are commenting on Zoom calls or here in the room to keep your comments to three minutes or less. Thank you. Alright, go ahead.
Penn Fitch, ten forty-six Patton Street. This project represents an orderly expansion of an existing enterprise and has been uniquely coordinated with the adjacent Apple Ridge Residential Project. The one issue that I raised previously is the interface of this project with the adjacent road and sidewalk access to Apple Ridge. This enterprise requires a security fence. So the question is whether the type B buffer will be located within the security fence area or outside the fence area and the resulting interface with the Apple Ridge access road and sidewalk. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fitch. That's it? Alright, we'll, we'll close the public comments then. Will, would you care to address Mr. Fitch's question about where is the buffering?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair. To describe, we will actually have fencing that'll connect, and I know you all it does show it that way. We'll have fencing that will connect the exit road here. So basically, the buildings will act as barrier along the front along with a gate for the exit, exit. And then we will have landscaping that will be between the sidewalk and the buildings themselves. So the buffer and sidewalk will all be outside of the security fencing. And that will be the case along the east side. We'll have a sidewalk along the edge of the road that Apple Ridge plans. And there would be no fencing along that east side because again, the building will provide the barrier for, for the facility.
Alright, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Board?
Good.
No questions? Would there be a motion forthcoming?
I'm sure. I'll do the motion.
I'd like to recommend for approval, I move the planning board recommend city council adopt an ordinance amending the official zoning map of the city of Hendersonville, changing the zoning designation of the subject property pen nine five seven nine seven five six eight one seven from R-15 medium-density residential to PCD Plan Commercial Development Conditional Zoning District based on the site plan and the list of conditions submitted by and agreed to by the applicant dated May eighteenth, twenty twenty-two and presented at this meeting and subject to the following. The development shall be consistent with the site plan, including the list of applicable conditions contained therein and the following permitted uses. Permitted uses, number one, mini warehouses. I don't believe we need number two, so we'll call the next, I, the next item three. The petition is found to be consistent with the city of Hendersonville twenty thirty comprehensive plan based on the information from the staff analysis because the subject property is located in an area designated as development opportunity and priority growth area according to the city's twenty thirty comprehensive plan. And three, furthermore, we find the petition to be reasonable and in the public interest based on the information from the staff analysis, public hearing, and because one, the development of mini warehouses will be an extension of an existing used. Two, the mini warehouses will be in close proximity to recently approved affordable multifamily housing. And three, the petition provides access from a minor thoroughfare as required in the PCD zoning district.
Very much. There are second.
Sure, I'll second it.
Okay, Neil Brown, second of the motion. Any further discussion on this? Alright, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passed unanimously. Thank you. This will be a recommendation to city council. And they will take it up at their next meeting. Thank you. Hey, I'm going to step down. Tamara's going to take on the next two.
Okay. So Matt will present the next item.
Next item is for a standard rezoning along Irkwood Drive with Cameron and Kena Kilpatrick for a 1.89 acre parcel that is currently in the county, under the county zonings, R-40. They're proposing to rezone it to, or actually the city is proposing that it be rezoned to Greenville Highway Mixed Use as a response to the annexation of this parcel. Any parcel that gets annexed into the city has to be assigned zoning. And staff believes that the Greenville Highway Mixed Use is the most appropriate zoning for this parcel. The current land use, as I mentioned, the property is zoned R-40. It is located adjacent to the city limits in an area where the Greenville Highway Mixed Use District is predominant. There is one parcel zoned C-three special use at the corner of Shepherd Street and Greenville Highway. The only other zoning district within the city's jurisdiction and vicinity of the subject property is R-15 District, which runs along the north side away from Greenville Highway back towards town. The county zoning in this area, as I mentioned, is predominantly R-40, which is a very low-density, one-unit-per-acre zoning. Single-family. The R-1 residential zoning on the other side of Greenville Highway is also present, but not directly adjacent to the property. There's also a one-hundred-year floodplain running along Irkwood Drive at the front of the property. That is of note. So whenever properties rezone, we like to look at what the permitted uses would be under the proposed zoning versus the the existing zoning. In this case, the existing zone is the R-40, which we mentioned, very low-density. Greenville Highway Mixed Use allows for a wide range of neighborhood-scale commercial uses as well as a range of housing types. There is no density cap in Greenville Highway. We do have a maximum footprint of twelve thousand square feet. And single-family maximum height is thirty-five feet. Town homes, multifamily, commercial, the max height is forty-two feet. And there would be design standard. There are design standards for all structures except for a single-family and two-family homes. Taking a look at the site, the upper-left photo is looking down Irkwood Drive from the Greenville Highway intersection would be behind you where the roundabout is located. Upper-right, well, let me do the bottom right is how you access the, the, you cross the floodplain or the creek to get into the main portion of the site, which is where any development would be able to occur. And the upper-right shows you the, the, the heart of the site and the existing trees on it. Bottom-left is just a confluence of two small streams that come together at a culvert. And I, you know, this was not after a rain, but from talking to folks, I understand that that area will fill up real, rather quickly with some of the rains that we get. The future land use, this is, the property is outside of the boundary of the future land use map. The future land use map does show high-intensity neighborhood directly adjacent to the north. That's where our map ends. So you have high-intensity neighborhood there. You also have natural resource and agriculture designation within that hundred-year floodplain that is also adjacent to the site. The county's future land use is also shown on here. It's got community service center around this node of Shepherd Street and Greenville Highway intersection. So staff wants to point out that we do recommend that, since this is not in the future land use map, that a future land use designation would be applied if, as part of a recommendation. And we believe the high-intensity neighborhood and natural resource and agriculture would be appropriate. So taking a look at the comprehensive plan consistency as part of the criteria for considering a rezoning. The, as I mentioned, subject property is not designated, but the growth management map does designate it as priority infill area. And we encourage infill development that utilizes existing infrastructure in order to maximize public investment and encourage infill development or redevelopment in areas planned for high-intensity development. Population and housing chapter also promotes compatible infill development and encourages a wide range of housing types and mixed land use patterns that place residents within walking distance of services. The Natural and Environmental Resource Chapter discourages development of structures and impervious surfaces within the FEMA floodway and hundred-year floodplain. And the chapter aims to protect land adjacent to creeks and streams and promotes the preservation of woodlands. The, there were no goals, strategies or actions from the Cultural and Historic Resources, Community Facilities and Water Resources Chapters that were directly applicable. Transportation and Circulation Chapter encourages mixed-use pedestrian-friendly development that reduces the need to drive between land uses as well, as well as the enhancement of key gateways into the city. Looking at our next set of criteria, we take a look at compatibility. There are a mix of medium-density residential, neighborhood-scale, non-residential uses in proximity to the site. And the Greenville Highway Mixed Use zoning would be compatible with the, those existing land uses. The change conditions, the Greenville Highway Mixed Use District has been in place for about twenty years. Private development proximity to the subject property had been in place for a number of years. Improvement to the intersection at Shepherd Street and Irkwood Drive with the roundabout enhances the transportation infrastructure in that area. The public interest, the addition of low-intensity commercial uses and residential uses would provide additional opportunities and provide a benefit to the city. The public facilities would be served by city water and sewer. Irkwood is a minor thoroughfare in our comprehensive plan. It is maintained by NCDOT. It is slated for improvements, but has not. There are no funds in place beyond the project that was recently completed with the roundabout. The subject property has been reviewed by the fire department and city and will be served by city police. Effect on natural environment, as mentioned, there is a one-hundred-year floodplain and heavily wooded property currently. So taking all this into account, staff has drafted the following comprehensive plan consistency statement. The proposed zoning presents an opportunity for compatible infill development and a mix of land uses as called for in chapters two, eight and nine of the city's twenty thirty comprehensive plan. And we have rationale for approval being, one, Greenville Highway Mixed Use is the predominant zoning district in this area. Two, the petition allows for Henderson County's future land use designation. Two, the petition aligns with Henderson County's future land use designation. And then for denial, we have a rationale that the proposed zoning would permit development that does not align with the county's current R forty zoning. And with that, I'll open it up for any questions. I don't know if the applicant is here, may want to speak, and then we have one pre-submitted public comment that will be read.
At this point, if there's anyone that would like to speak on behalf of the Kilpatrick's or, or if they would like to speak. Okay. So. Yeah, well, the owner, I was just. Would you like to speak then? Go ahead.
Thank you. My name is Rick Hoon and I own the prop, the property that would be right next to it on Irkwood Drive. And one thing that confuses me, about four years ago, we went to a planning board because they had a petition to rezone that. From residential to L C, which was approved. So the fact that it's listed as a R forty. Surprises me a little bit because we were at the meeting when the county approved the L C designation. And so my question that I submitted was, what is the advantage of, for the property owner to go from an L C? To the Greenville Highway mixed use. Obviously, being a property owner on Irkwood Drive, when we first moved there fifteen years ago, everything was zoned residential. And we're seeing zoning changes being made. Mainly L C is from the roundabout all the way up to Sherman Drive currently. And so the. The original residential of one unit per acre seems to slowly be disappearing. And. We will be next to this property. And as it becomes, if it becomes part of the city, the density of what can go on that is going to be greater. And I was hoping maybe there would have been some plans presented today or something on what they intend to use that property for. And there's not, but I just, I'm just a little bit concerned that there might be a very high density apartments or something like that. They're going to be installed in what used to be a residential community and residential neighborhood, so. And, and again, the, I'm almost positive it was rezoned L C, but I'm not sure where that came from.
Well, Matt, do you want to respond to that? Because I believe people get public services when they annex into the city, that's one of the reasons they do that.
That's correct. In order to be provided with sewer service. In this location, you would have to request annexation into the city. And the L C zoning, I mean, what we're showing right here is the current zoning map. The local commercial zoning is found on the south side of Irkwood, and this is the subject property, so it may have. You know, could have been rezoned to L C and then back to R forty, I would find that to be unlikely. But it may have been that this, this area was rezoned and there could have been some confusion about that. And as far as.
That area on the south side was rezoned and it was about a year after that, that the application was made for the other. Lot, and at that time, it was the original owner. And the argument for that was they had no plans for it, but it would have been easier to sell. And again, I was at the meeting when it was approved, so I'm not sure why it hasn't been changed.
It could be a mistake on the zoning map. In either case, the applicant, you know, has applied for annexation.
And the status of the annexation.
And regarding city sewer and water. I, I have city sewer and water, so the accessibility of city sewer and water is still available, obviously. I pay more for it because I'm not part of the city, but it is available on Irkwood Drive.
So we currently have a policy that if someone. Wants to attach or needs to attach to the city sewer that we, that they're required to request annexation.
However, if you were part of a previous subdivision and you requested city water or sewer. We can't require you to annex unless your entire subdivision wants to.
Well, and it's, it's not a subdivision, they're individual halls. Sewer and water have been there, we've been there fifteen years, so whatever happened previous to that, I don't know if.
It seems the rules have changed, so.
Yeah, I would assume, but.
Okay. All right, so you were the one who submitted a written comment, but you pretty much said what, what was in it. Matt, do I have to read it into the record if he already presented? It's not listening. I, I think I'm okay. If he makes me do it, we'll do it. We're trying to keep the meeting moving. All right, so do we have any? Outside comments from on Zoom or anything? No. Okay, so I think we'll close the public part and open it for board discussion.
Before you do that, Tamara, we have to have a formal action by the board for John's recusal. He can't just say I'm recusing myself, the board actually has to hear the reason why he's recusing himself and then say, okay. Make a motion to allow that. So before you take action on the next item.
Today and said someone in his office. Was a, a part of this issue and. So he felt that he had to recuse himself. Well, here's coming, is that? That's the next one.
Yeah, I think there, there are two legitimate reasons for both of them. Sorry, John, to.
But could you, could you let state for the board why you recused yourself? Could you state for the board why you had to recuse yourself and then we?
So then you all make a motion to allow John to recuse himself and vote on that.
I make a motion that John be allowed to, that Mr. Blatt be allowed to recuse himself on this project.
I second.
Okay, red seconds.
Thank you, sorry for all that.
Okay, all in favor? Opposed? None. Okay, so now we open for board discussion.
So I have one question for Matt. We're not approving or recommending approval for the annexation. Just for the zoning that will go along with that annexation, is that correct?
That's correct. The annexations are decided by the city council. The annexation request for this particular piece of property went through its first reading at the last meeting. It would have its public hearing and final decision at the next city council meeting. This recommendation for the rezoning would be running concurrently with that annexation decision, annexation decision made first. And then it needs to be assigned zoning, and so we're, this would be following right behind that, if that makes sense.
And Matt, sorry, before you sit down, if I may. Any proposed development, whatever, would have to go through the normal approval channels. Just for the chunk of land.
This just assigns the base zoning and would allow the permitted uses. And the, the development standards and design guidelines that are in that zoning district, we got any proposed development that would occur on that site.
Okay, thank you.
If approved.
All right, are we ready to entertain a motion?
I move that the planning board recommends city council adopt an ordinance amending the official zoning map of the city of Hendersonville, changing the zoning designation of the subject property. Pins nine five seven seven dash one eight dash seven three one six. From Henderson County R forty estate residential zoning district to city of Hendersonville. G H M U Greenville Highway mixed use based on the following. Petition is found to be consistent with the city of Hendersonville twenty thirty comprehensive plan based on the information from the staff analysis. And because the proposed zoning presents an opportunity for compatible infill development. And a mix of land uses as called for in chapters two, eight, and nine of the city's twenty thirty comprehensive plan. Additionally, we find this petition to be reasonable and in the public interest based on the information from the staff analysis, public hearing. And because Greenville Highway is the predominant zoning in the area. And two, the petition aligns with the Henderson County's future land use designation. Furthermore, we recommend designating the future land use of the parcel as high intensity neighborhood and natural agricultural resources. For the portion of the subject property located in the hundred year floodplain.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Aye, opposed, motion passes.
And I think the second one is John's recusing himself from this one also, we need to take same action we just did.
Okay.
And then he will, can come back on the, the following.
Okay.
Yes, I'm asking to be recused on this next matter as I have a potential conflict of interest with one of the applicants.
All right, thank you.
I move that we allow John Blatt to recuse himself from this issue.
I second that. Okay, Barbara seconds, all in favor? Opposed? Okay. We're in agreement with John. Okay, so we're going to the, the third item C.
Yes, this application, again, the city is the applicant for a property located on. Upward Road at the corner of Ballenger Road. This property is located down here, you can see in close relationship, I twenty six. Again, annexation has been requested same timeline as the previous application. This is the consideration of assigning zoning to this particular parcel. It is a three, three point eight acre parcel, the proposed zoning is C H M U, commercial highway mixed use. The commercial highway mixed use district was actually created, you can see it better on this, as part of the Upper Road Planning District. Which was a sewer expansion plan that was a result of the E T J not being expanded to this, this area. So the city developed a, a planning district and the C H M U district, zoning district. Was created to, to serve within this area. Taking a look at the current land use and zoning, the subject property is currently zoned regional commercial under the county zoning jurisdiction. Is located outside of the corporate limits of the city. There are some other satellite annexations nearby and they are zoned C H M U and C three. These properties within these districts are developed with fast food restaurants, lodging. And there is also a significant amount of vacant property in the area. Also some other commercial uses and institutional uses in close proximity. As well as some residential further from Upper Road. Again, looking at the permitted uses that would be, would fall into this zoning district, you can see a wide range of, of intense commercial uses. Highway oriented types of commercial uses as well as a range of residential uses as well. The density for residential uses varies in this zoning district based on the amount of open space that's provided. So the maximum would be twelve units per acre if sixty percent of the land was retained as open space. The height limits in this zoning district are based on stories rather than feet. And single family has a maximum height of two and a half stories, townhouses a max of three stories. Multifamily and commercial has a max of four stories. And there are also design standards in this particular zoning district that would apply to everything but single family and two family. Take a look at the site, the subject property, as mentioned, is at the corner of Upper Road and Ballenger Road. See that in this upper right picture. A long upward road, you can see there's a, a, a grade change that goes up to the site. Once you get up to the top of that, you can see that the grading, some grading has occurred on the property. This picture is looking back towards Ballenger Road, and then this picture is bottom right. Standing with my back to upward road, looking up Ballenger Road, which is an N C D O T street. We have noted to N C D O T potential concerns with site distance at this location where it crests a hill. Taking a look at the future land use map, the. Subject property is designated as regional activity center and is located along the perimeter of an activity node. All parcels in the surrounding area share the same designation due to the proximity with the interchange at I twenty six. I twenty six is classified as a freeway, Upper Road is classified as a boulevard. The only other land use designation in proximity is the natural and agricultural resources due to the Dunn Creek floodplain. And the low intensity that is further residential that is further removed from Upper Road. So take a look at the criteria for rezoning, first is comprehensive plan consistency. The regional activity center designation states the following goal. Meet the large scale retail needs of Hendersonville's residents while encouraging mixed use walkable design through redevelopment and infill projects. Staff finds that the C H M U zoning district is consistent with these goals. Along with a number of the development guidelines that fall under that particular goal. The growth management map designates these parcels as priority growth area and as development opportunity. Goal for land use L U dash three, promote fiscal responsibility with development. Annexation and expansion of Hendersonville's extraterritorial jurisdiction. So that, that accounts for the relevant parts of the land use chapter. We also have under population and housing where it promotes mix of land use, a mix of land use patterns. And the natural and environmental resources chapter did not have any relevant strategies for this particular property or application. Nor did the cultural and historic resources chapter nor the community facilities chapter. Water resources chapter provides the recommendation to utilize low impact development for stormwater management. And the transportation and circulation chapter supports the mixed use pedestrian friendly development and enhancing key gateways to the city. So we take a look at criteria two, under compatibility. In this case, we have a subject property fronting a boulevard near I twenty six, the commercial highway mixed use permits. District, the commercial highway mixed use district permits uses that are compatible with the, this area. Also, the design guidelines of C H M U help to ensure compatibility. The third criteria is changed conditions. In this case, we've seen increased development demand along Upper Road corridor. As the uses along this commercial highway continue to intensify, is anticipated that growth will continue along and in the vicinity of this arterial. And the fourth condition is public interest. In this case, we consider these uses, the use is permitted in the C H M U. Both commercial and residential development along this corridor could serve a public interest. And the design guidelines of the C H M U district further public interest as well. Fifth criteria considered as public facilities, the subject property would be served by city water and sewer as well as. City police, fire, and public works. Upper Road is designated as a boulevard and maintained by N C D O T. Ballenger Road is also maintained by N C D O T and designated as a local street. And the sixth and final criteria is the effect on the natural environment. In this case, the subject property has already been cleared and graded. So taking this into account, staff has drafted the following comprehensive plan consistency statement. The goals and strategies of L U dash nine regional activity center. Calls for primary and secondary recommended land uses, locations, and development guidelines which align with the proposed C H M U zoning. And accompanying that, we have a draft reasonableness statement which includes rationale for approval. Commercial highway mixed use is the zoning district established for the Upper Road planning area. The commercial highway mixed use zoning district is well suited to achieve the goals of the comprehensive plan for this area. And the property is located in an area designated as priority growth according to the city's comprehensive plan. And rationale for denial would be that while the C H M U zoning district permits development that may align with the development guidelines. Found in L U dash nine point four, not all the. not all the guidelines are requirements of the city district. With that, I'll open it up for any questions.
Thank you, Matt. Does anyone on the board have questions for Matt? Okay. Well, wonderful. I guess at this point, if anyone is here representing the landowners and Jeff Justice or, or the, no, no one wants to speak? Okay. All right. Do we have anybody on Zoom or anything? Wants to speak, anybody from the public?
No hands are raised.
Okay. So we will close the public discussion and open it for board discussion. Anyone have any questions? Okay, we have a motion.
Yes.
Okay, Barbara.
I move the planning board recommends city council adopt an ordinance amending the official zoning map of the city of Hendersonville, changing the zoning designation of the subject property PINS nine five eight eight dash forty dash six nine three four semicolon nine five eight eight dash forty dash seven eight four four and nine five eight eight dash forty dash eight seven nine five from Henderson County RC Regional Commercial Zoning District to City of Hendersonville CHMU parentheses, commercial highway mixed use and the parentheses based on the following. The petition is found to be consistent with the City of Hendersonville twenty thirty comprehensive plan based on the information from the staff analysis and because the proposed zoning provides design standards which align with most of the design guidelines outlined under strategy LU dash nine point four of the city's twenty thirty comprehensive plan. Two, furthermore, we find this petition to be reasonable and in the public interest based on the information from the staff analysis, public hearing and because commercial highway mixed use is the zoning district established for the upward road planning area. Number two, the commercial highway mixed use zoning district is well suited to achieve the goals of the comprehensive plan for this area. And number three, the property is located in an area designated as a priority growth area. According to this city's comprehensive plan.
Thanks. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So it's passed. Thank you very much. Okay. We, yes.
It's been going pretty well.
I move the lead, Jim. Does anybody need a short break?
Thank you.
Thank you, Tamara. Very lonely out there.
All right. The next item is from the city to amend the Edwards Park rezoning, Matt, please.
Thank you. Yes, this is a application from the city remove a split zoning on a portion of Edwards Park. Most of that, of this particular subject property is zoned R six, but a small portion of it, tenth of an acre is zoned C three and proposing to remove the C three zoning and make the parcel entirely R six. You can see the surrounding zoning in the area and some of the existing land uses. You have C three that runs along Asheville Highway and the commercial, excuse me, the residential and institutional uses in the surrounding area are all zoned R six. You have some PID ever planned institutional development where Hendersonville High School is located. And then some C two zoning where the fire station is located at the intersection of North Main and Church Street. And everyone's favorite Pop's Diner right there at that intersection. You also, as we've done on some of these previous ones, we look at a comparison of the, the impacts of going from one district to another. In this case, we have a very small piece of land, so the impacts would not be significant related to permitted uses. But there are some similarities shown in green. And there are also some distinct differences between R six and C three as shown in red. These are all very intense commercial uses that are permitted under C three that would not be permitted under the R six zoning that is proposed. I believe folks are familiar with this site. Here's some, some photos of the existing conditions on the site. Some of the cabins, huts that are on, they're utilized by scouts that are on this property. And you can see some of the adjacent roadways as well. Taking a look at the future land use map, the subject property is designated as natural and agricultural resource. Future land use designation is recommended to accommodate open space agricultural uses, flood storage, stormwater facilities and recreational amenities. It is adjacent to medium intensity neighborhood to the north and northwest and east neighborhood activity center to the west and urban institutional to the south. And there's some downtown support for their getting towards Seventh Avenue as well. Taking a look at our criteria for comprehensive plan consistency. As mentioned, the natural resource and agricultural designation is the, is what the future land use map recommends for this particular property. And we, as I mentioned, the recommended land uses are open space, recreational amenities, low impact stormwater management facilities, flood storage and agricultural uses. The growth management map designated this area as natural resource and agricultural area as well. These are areas in which the city should discourage development and promote the preservation of environmentally sensitive features and agricultural uses. Under goal LU one, we encourage infill development that utilizes existing infrastructure. We encourage development and redevelopment in areas planned for high intensity development. Under population and housing, we promote compatible infill development, maintaining and enhancing older neighborhoods so that they retain their value, maintaining and enhancing the public space in older neighborhoods and an action to develop city owned property within neighborhoods into neighborhood parks. Action to seek opportunities to acquire additional property for future parks. Under natural and environmental resources, we have a call to protect land adjacent to streams in order to protect water quality, reduce erosion and protect wildlife habitat. There is a stream, piped stream on the subject property. Under cultural and historic resources chapter, we do have some relevant sections here. Strategy CR dash one point four, design the public realm to complement historic architecture through features such as uniquely designed signage and street furniture. Incorporate interpretive and promotional elements within historic neighborhoods that educate citizens and visitors about Hendersonville's rich history. We know that both Hyman Heights and Cold Spring Park are both adjacent to this particular area. So that's why this particular chapter is highlighted. There are a number of strategies under community facilities as this is a publicly owned and you know, park designated property. Goal CF dash one maximize utilization of community facilities as a focal point. As folk, as community focal points in order to promote sound stewardship, taxpayer dollars and afford increased quality in facilities. Strategy CF one point one encourage co-location of new community facilities. I'll go through these a little bit quicker. Continue to encourage joint use of existing community facilities. Encourage location of community facilities in mixed use community centers with excellent multimodal access. Balance investment in new park space and amenities with anticipated maintenance resources. Create a strong theme and brand for parks in order to increase awareness and visibility. Expand and adjust park amenities to match community needs and expectations. Evaluate park facilities to determine usage and redesign or replace underutilized facilities. Develop detailed recommendations for new park acquisitions, improvements to existing parkland and replacement of underutilized equipment. Ensure that new parks are designed as a safe, as safe environments for users. Encourage that a park and or accessible open space are available within a ten minute walk of each neighborhood. Develop existing city owned vacant parcels within existing neighborhoods into pocket parks and gathering places. Under water resources, again, the low impact development for stormwater management goal. And there were no goals or strategies related to the transportation and circulation chapter. Luke, can you click back on this? Under compatibility, the proposed R six zoning would expand the existing R six zoning in the area and remove a remnant of C three. Under changed conditions, the fire station one location across from the subject property between North Main and North Church Street is being utilized for an expansion of the fire department facilities. The impact of the expansion calls for a need for additional parks. The expansion of the R six under public interest, the expansion of R six zoning would permit uses which are in the public interest, including parks and neighborhood community centers. Under public facilities, the subject property is in an urban location that is well served by all public facilities. And the effect on the natural environment, the subject property features a piped blue line stream that runs along North Main Street on the western edge of the subject property. The stream, the stream is daylighted after it crosses Locust Street. Taking all this into account, we've, staff has drafted a comprehensive plan consistency statement as follows, the future land use designation of natural resource agricultural area recommends primary uses which are compatible with publicly owned properties zoned R six high density residential. And for our rationale for approval, the R six zoning would be an expansion of the primary zoning classification of the subject property. R six zoning permits uses which are compatible with the surrounding land uses. R six zoning contains dimensional standards which are compatible with the surrounding built environment. And a rationale for denial would be the R six zoning would reduce the number of permitted uses on a portion of the subject property. And with that, I'll answer any questions you have.
Thanks, sir. Questions?
No.
All right. Is anybody here in the room care to speak on this matter? All right. Thank you. Any folks on the Zoom call, please? Ahoi? Yes? Yes, we have one?
We do. Yes.
All right. Please go ahead.
Yeah.
Yeah, Ken Fitch, ten forty six Patton Street. Many of us received letters regarding this rezoning that would affect the project of major interest to the public. My comment is seeking some clarification. In addition to the mini golf project that would be located on the subject property, the adjacent VFW project envisions a multi-use, multi-event venue. So a major issue will be parking and access in this immediate area. From the plans, it appears that the C three section contains a current parking presence. So the question is whether the new R six rezoning will require specific new considerations for parking setbacks and access as well as lighting of which we should be aware, to be specific. If the current C three area is rezoned R six, does that change what can occur in that location? That's it. Cause I mean, it's a mess as it is. So what happens if it's R six? Are there requirements under R six that we really have to know about? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fitch. I might point out that nothing was said here tonight about what they're going to do with this property. Just strictly an R six request. And you may have valid questions and they would have to be addressed down the road perhaps. But we're just going to treat it as an R six request and, and nothing more.
Anything proposed for that site would have to meet the standards of R six.
Correct. Right. So, Mr. Fitch, I don't know if that addresses your concern, but again, the parking commercial use is a question for down the road. Thank you, though. All right. Does the, that's it on the Zoom calls?
Yes.
All right. Thank you very much. All right. Does the board have any need for discussion? All right. Is there a motion to be had?
Oh, sure. I move, planning board recommends city council adopt an ordinance amending the official zoning map of the city of Hendersonville, changing the zoning designation of the subject property nine five six nine dash seven oh dash five eight six zero from C three highway business and R six high density residential to R six high density residential based on the following. The petition is found to be consistent with the City of Hendersonville twenty thirty comprehensive plan based on the information from the staff analysis and because the future land use designation of natural resource agricultural area recommends primary uses which are compatible with publicly owned properties zoned R six high density residential. Furthermore, we find this petition to be reasonable and in the public interest based on the information from the staff analysis, public hearing and because one, R six zoning would be an expansion of the primary zoning classification of the subject property. R six, number two, R six zoning permits uses which are compatible with surrounding land uses. And number three, R six zoning contains dimensional standards which are compatible with the surrounding built environment.
Thank you, Barbara. Is there a second?
Second.
Stu Glassman has a second. Any further discussion on this matter? All right. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nope. Passed unanimously. And thank you on that. And then we'll move on to the sidewalk discussion.
Thank you. Yes. The city of Hendersonville is the applicant again here to propose some revisions to our zoning code related to the requirements for sidewalks. Another sidewalk construction requirements apply to all zoning districts that the, the most significant change here would apply to our residential districts. And essentially the, there are a number of changes and clarifications that are proposed, but the primary change is relates to the distance requirement. So if a new construction is occurring for a single family home and the current language states that if you're, if there is a government building within one and a half miles of this, of your property, then you would be required to build sidewalks from property line or property line in front of your property as part of your single family home development. And so we, we are proposing to reduce that number from a mile and a half to a half mile, which equates to about a ten minute walk. And so we are bringing it down, proposing to bring it down to where there's more of a clear connection between why someone would be required to build sidewalks and the distance that they are from some public amenity. We're also addressing the list of amenities that are included. Government building language is, was a bit broad. And you know, arguably could have included things like a wastewater treatment plant or you know, public works facility that's not even open to the public. So you know, maybe some employees would be walking there, but the general public would not be walking to those locations. And so there's some amendments to the list. And we did run this by the planning board legislative committee, committee of one. Planning board member Neil Brown, and we had a good discussion. It was a good meeting. Since the staff report. Staff report was distributed, there actually has been some tweaks to what was the language that will, that was in the staff report. One of the big ones is that instead of the linear traverse being the walking route that has. The, you know, the shortest distance as, as you would walk along a route. So the, you know, if you gotta. Go up the street, turn left and then turn right at the next street and then walk over. And then you get to the library. Instead of measuring it that way, we are measuring it as the crow flies and that simplifies things. And actually it's gonna, it's gonna. Cast a little bit broader net since we're reducing it by a whole mile. The other clarification is that any multifamily development would be required to build sidewalks. That was not in our current language.
Kind of quick question.
Yes.
Does multifamily mean two units and more?
Two units would be two family.
All right. What's multifamily?
Three or more.
Three or more. Okay. Not just a big apartment project.
And also attached. So we have a definition for multifamily, but so you three, you know, three single family homes would not be multifamily. So I, those are the main things that changed was how we're measuring it. We did include what was not in your staff report was there are three. Exemptions from sidewalks that are found in our subdivision ordinance. You don't have to build the subdivision ordinance that you do not have to build sidewalks along a freeway interstate. Along alleys and accessways and along gravel streets. Or zoning ordinance does not say that. So if you're on a gravel street and you're not subdividing subdivision ordinance exemption is not there for you. The sun, you have to abide by the zoning ordinance only, even if you were subdividing and they're, they were in conflict. Subdivision ordinance says he doesn't, you don't have to build them. Zoning ordinance says you do. The stricter of those two ordinances applies. So in this case, we were, we're incorporating these exemptions into the zoning ordinance. So they match the subdivision ordinance. So you would not have to build a sidewalk in these, in those bottom three criteria. Is that accurate? We have clarified some of the language around the fee in lieu. An actual dollar amount per linear foot, which is what we've been utilizing. For folks who have a justifiable reason why they feel like they should not, you know, they have some type of. Issue that would prevent, prevent them from being able to build sidewalks. It makes it impractical. Then they can pay a fee in lieu at a rate of $75 per linear foot. So we're formalizing that. And but other than that, it. It's still, it was an administrative decision before. It's an administrative decision after this, just clarifying some of the language. And other than that, those are the main changes. Are there any questions?
Let me just say, you said if you build three single family homes that are not attached, that still doesn't have to have a sidewalk.
No, they would. It wouldn't be multifamily.
Okay. So they don't have.
It would. Now they would if they meet the, the, the standards. Any of the conditions. So if they're within a half mile. When a property, a joint property within existing sidewalks, if there's already a sidewalk there, but there's not in front of this property. You would have to extend it. If there is a sidewalk within 400 feet. On the same side of the street, then you would have to put your segment of sidewalk in. And if your single family home development was within the half mile radius, you would have to. You would have to construct the sidewalks as well. So there's these criteria for whether you do or don't have to. Single family automatically does not require sidewalks. It has to fit into one of these categories. Multifamily always requires sidewalks according to our proposed changes. Commercial always going to trigger sidewalks.
$75 linear foot sounds very cheap.
That sounds very expensive. Take that up with the director. City engineer.
That number is, I'd say was due to go up next week, but now it may go down. I don't.
Are you be surprised? It's a lot of work. You gotta form it, get a right of way permit.
Has there been any study of, is there any land around that doesn't have a sidewalk within half a mile as the crow flies?
Is there any land around? We haven't done a, you know, like a developable parcel, vacant parcel analysis.
I mean, this, this sounds like it's a lessening of the requirement, but I'm just not sure.
So a mile and a half, the way this was being applied, a mile and a half radius is being placed over, you know, around the border of a subject property. It almost covered the entire city.
For sure. To your knowledge, have there been funds paid into the pot of money as opposed to building sidewalks? You know, we talk about it from time to time.
Say, ask the question again.
Have there been projects that have been approved by the city manager pay into the sidewalk pot of money?
Yes, yes, we have folks pay a fee in lieu.
And have they been charging 75?
That is, over the last year or so, that is the rate we've been charging. There's been some back and forth on this. Quotes from contractors that were all over the place. And then we decided to formalize a fee to just kind of eliminate the.
I can jump in here. I can jump on that a little bit since it was kind of, so we, we had had a fee and then had gone to, you know, estimates. There was a lot of energy being expended on whether the estimates were correct and. And so it, it made a lot of sense just to establish a number based on. Work that our city engineer did in reviewing our sidewalk standard and establishing a cost baseline for installing that. And then just applying that to the projects as a, as a standard fee. So that, that's how that came about. It, it minimizes, we're able to tell them upfront. If you're going to request a fee in lieu, this is what it's going to cost, that sort of thing.
And we, we've also turned down a request for feeling where they didn't, they didn't meet the standards. They were really close. They needed. We needed a sidewalk connection as a public good. So we've told folks, no. So it's definitely not a, just to get out of building them, you have to meet the standard. You have to have some kind of issue in place, topography or something like that.
Yeah. Thank you.
There, there is, you know, I have a map showing where our residential districts are to give you an idea. And you can, you can, but I, I do not have a half mile radius. Shown on any of this, nor any vacant land, nor do we have all the, those public amenities that are listed included. I mean, every bus stop is, would be. So your, your transit routes are going to be pretty well covered. So those are the, those are the important areas where you want to be able to fill that, that gap. So people that can choose to travel by foot or those who don't have a choice will be able to do so safely. This is supported through various sections of the comprehensive plan related to walkability and development. One key one I wanted to point out was, and I read it for the last item. Encourage that a park and or accessible open space are available within a 10 minute walk of each neighborhood. So that 10 minute walk, that pedestrian shed, which you often hear referred to as a quarter miles, a five minute walk and a. Half miles, a 10 minute walk. These are, these are distances that are most likely to. Be walked if there are amenities there, destinations in those areas and, and proper public facilities. There is a greater likelihood that people will replace an automobile trip with a pedestrian trip. If you have that environment in place. And so this comes, you know, under our park section directly reflects the half mile. Distance. So that supports some of the, some of the proposals we've made here. Encourage that all bus stops are in locations that can be accessed safely and conveniently by pedestrians. Again. Listing the amenities that are, that are important and supported by our comprehensive plan. So with that, twenty thirty comprehensive plan calls for the city to continue to require adequate public facilities for new developments. To promote, to promote safe and walkable neighborhoods, to provide pedestrian connections to services and public facilities. And to develop a multimodal transportation network. With the rationale for approval, the text amendment reduces the trigger for sidewalk construction for new developments to 10 minute walk. Text amendment ensures the additional public amenities are considered when determining if sidewalks are required as part of a new development. The text amendment aligns with the requirements for sidewalks found in the subdivision ordinance. And the text amendment ensures that multifamily development will require sidewalks or a fee in lieu of sidewalks. And rationale for denial says approval, but I should say denial. The text amendment limits sidewalk construction by reducing the trigger for new sidewalks to a half mile linear traverse from public amenities. And with that, I'll open it up again for any questions.
Question? I, I have one. You know, we're, I'm sorry, did you?
I do, but go right.
All right. To get on the city sewer, you know, we're, we're annexing and building projects out in the, what was the county in the Boondocks? I don't know of any parks necessarily anywhere near these. And is that just, that's the way it goes, huh?
Well, we don't have a Parks and Recreation Department.
Yeah, I'll, I'll answer that. So I think that's a conversation that is happening. It's come up at a couple of the. Rezonings for projects that were either annexed or represented development on the sort of outer edges of the city. One major component of the comprehensive plan as we've sort of written the RFP, which we are sort of in the final stages of. Refining and editing would include some park master planning, right? Where you'd be looking for. Additional locations. I think the reality is that our, our floodplain greenway is going to be kind of one of the key ways in which we try to provide. Park space or at least connectivity to park space to some of those areas, but. I think then the other thing would be that, you know, council has talked and has hired their. As a part of the recently adopted budget, there was a position. A full-time position that I believe is going to be working in public works. Whose role is to sort of work with the ESB, but also basically to be a internal Parks and Rec driver. Whether that's pursuing grants or, or whatnot. So no, no quick answer to that, but. Some recognition, I think, on the city's part that that's a, an aspect of what's currently happening in the development world that we need to. Thinking about addressing.
Neil, you have a question?
I do. And I, I told Matt I'd be bringing this up. I like this. I really like this proposal. It closes a lot of loopholes that I didn't realize we had. One thing that surprised and bothered me when I joined this board a couple of years ago was to find out that. When we have a fee in lieu, it can be used to pay loose salary or diesel for the trash trucks or. You know, anything that goes into the general fund.
We may have an update for you there.
Okay, because I really think fee and lieu should go into a dedicated fund.
So there is a new or. Dedicated fund being created so for that very reason. And is a function of the finance department. It does not require. Special approval or, you know, a public hearing or anything like that. So that is actually happening.
Fantastic. Thank you. I retract my last half minute.
Yeah. And, and just another update, which you have more info on than I do, but we're currently engaged in a new pedestrian plan. Wait, the, we just recently, within the last two or three years expended the last dollars of the sidewalk fund, the sidewalk bond. That the city had adopted years ago with the original pedestrian plan. And we're currently working on an updated pedestrian plan, which will, will no doubt result in. Suggested proposed projects for additional pedestrian infrastructure. Some of which could be funded by the, whatever that fee and lieu sidewalk fund generates.
Great news. Actually putting this proposal in front of those consultants as well to see if they have any feedback before it goes to city council.
All right. Thanks. Do we have a motion, folks?
Sure. I'd like to recommend the, for approval, I move. Planning board recommend city council adopt an ordinance mending the official city of Hendersonville zoning ordinance article. I guess that's six dash, it's in Roman numerals, general provisions. Section six dash 12 sidewalks based on the following. One, the petition is found to be consistent with the city of Hendersonville twenty thirty comprehensive plan. Based on the information from the staff analysis and the public hearing and because. The twenty thirty comprehensive plan calls for the city to continue to require adequate public facilities for new developments. To promote safe and walkable neighborhoods, to provide pedestrian connections to services and public facilities. And to develop a multimodal transportation network. Two, we find this petition to be reasonable and in the public interest. Based on the information from the staff analysis and the public hearing and because. One, the text amendment reduces the trigger for sidewalk construction for new developments to a 10 minute walk. Point five miles. Two, the text amendment ensures that additional public amenities are considered. When determining if sidewalks are required as part of a new development. Three, the text amendment aligns with requirements for sidewalks found in the subdivision ordinance. For the text amendment ensures that multifamily developments will require sidewalks or a fee in lieu of sidewalks.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Neil Brown seconded. All those in favor of the motions, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? New. Okay. That takes care of that. I, I have a question for, for Angie, the city attorney, if, if that's appropriate at this moment. Are we, are we done with the, the agenda items? We are, right? I asked, I was down at the city office the other day and Alex was, I think, the only one there. And I asked her to perhaps run this by you. We ask folks who care to speak, either in person or on the Zoom call for their name and their address. We don't really ask applicants to give their address here. And sometimes they have a number of people representing them. And why do we ask for a full address from people? And, and some people, not all people. That concerns me. It's a little, I think it might be intimidating to someone who doesn't want to give their, their full address in a, in a public forum. And you don't have to answer it today if you want.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. But I mean, I, I totally get why you're asking the question. As far as applicants go, their address is on their application. And so sometimes it's, I know, like in city council, so the clerk has a record of who can speak and if we need to get back in touch with somebody. But you're right, their address does become public record. But that, that information is also very available if, or at least if you own property, that's going to be on the tax record. So it's an interesting question. I've never been asked that before. So it's a good question. I'll get back with you maybe at the next meeting. Would that be sufficient?
Write a blog.
They know I don't give short answers.
That's my question. That's it. Is there anything else?
Good job, everybody.
One time I had pizza scheduled for six o'clock.